Good morning. I'm going to call our meeting to order for the Minnehaha County Commission for July 16th. And note for the record that we now have a full quorum of county commissioners. Before we get started, just a reminder to silence your cell phones, avoid embarrassment. Mine is not. It is now. Ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have an overflow seating in the room, right adjacent, so if you, with technology and phone or TVs and et cetera there, so if you would like to sit there, if you will be talking later, I appreciate you signing in in the corner back there. We need your name for the public record. I'm going to move on now to our routine business and look for a motion to approve our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is public record. If you, anybody would like to see any documents for that, it is available in the auditor's office. It's routine business for us, like personnel actions, bills, that type of thing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on our consent agenda? Is there any commissioner that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blinder?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on now to our regular business. We're going to have a discussion on home rule charter. This is solely a briefing. There is no commission action, no vote on this today. For me, this has been a three-year project and not new ground for the county as 23 years ago this discussion started. And a vote was brought to the public that came very close to passing to change the document or the county to a home rule charter form of government. The document to be discussed today uses much of the same language as what was voted on in the year 2002. I'm going to let Commissioner Kipley give a quick briefing on the home rule charter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got our briefing document that was attached to the agenda packets. I'll just go through that to set the stage because I think our goal was to solicit feedback from the public and we appreciate a very good turnout here today regarding the submission of a home rule charter to the voters at the general election. It's been, as you alluded to, Mr. Chair, a recurring topic of discussion for about two decades and we believe this proposed charter should be presented to the voters. Basically, to give some background, home rule charters allow local governments, counties and cities to exercise their constitutional authority to structure their local government according to the needs of their jurisdiction. As the largest county in the state in terms of population and budget, we in Minnehaha County see the need for professionalized and efficient management of county governance and finances and it has apparently, as noted again by our turnout today, become a matter of public interest. We would highlight the following items as the key elements of the draft charter, so three key items that we talked about as we drafted this. Maximizing local control, number one, consistent with state constitution and state statutes for a home rule charter form of government. Number two, providing Minnehaha County with a more efficient executive leadership and proper separation of powers with the appointment of a county manager. And three, combining the offices of auditor, registered deeds and treasurer into a newly established county finance office, which would be led by an appointed finance officer selected to provide professional and efficient fiscal leaderships for the county. So the charter, if adopted by a majority vote of the people in November, would take effect in January of 2025. And that would, the mechanics of referring that to a vote in November would be in the power of this body to refer that to the November ballot. So that's really all I had to tee us up, Mr. Chair, and I want to reserve as much time for public comments as we can.
Alrighty. So we're going to take public input. It's limited to three minutes to a speaker and we're going to take comments. It's now just about five after nine. We'll go to 10 after 10. I'm going to ask that repetition of a previous speaker's comments. We'll take time possibly from another speaker that may have newer original input, so please be respectful of all in the room. Let's avoid repetition. The other thing, again, just reminder to sign in and I think we have a new timer, don't we, Kim?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. So Kim will be our timekeeper. So everybody gets three minutes and we'll go to 10, 10. So please, public comment. And if you would line up, please, so everybody knows who's next, that would be great. At least have three people in line.
Excuse my voice. Good morning. We do not live in a democracy. The United States of America is a constitutional republic. We do not have appointed magistrates who rule over us. We, the people, elect individuals to represent us. Leah Anderson, county auditor, was elected to represent us and we shall continue to elect our officials in the United States of America and in all of South Dakota. Thank you.
Ma'am, we didn't get your name.
Oh, my name? I'm sorry. Jean Childs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Stangland, Northeast Sioux Falls. It was asked not long ago where the idea came from that this committee has a hostile attitude towards the county auditor. The answer to why is things exactly like this. I don't know if anyone remembers that there was a film adaptation of The Giver about a decade ago. I never saw it myself, but a line from the trailer stuck with me. When the people are allowed to choose, they choose wrong. That is the attitude that is on display right now. The voters chose wrong by voting Leah Anderson into office. We continue to choose wrong by refusing to get the hint and that we should shut up and just be happy with business as usual. And since we're not smart enough to make the right decisions, the only solution is to make our decisions for us. But I think the most egregious thing is the timing. Take a note of when this isn't happening. We're not discussing it before the primary election. If you had, you might have to worry about immediate consequences. Might have been a bit of a problem given that one of you came within recount distance of being primaried out of office. I wonder if this would have changed the outcome of the election if it had been hanging over your head. We're also not discussing it after the general election. A general election where the leading candidate is someone we all expect to have the kind of cooperative attitude towards Auditor Anderson that we wish you would have. A general election that may likely result in there being among you someone who will actually vouch for her. A general election that will notably not include the father of a current county commissioner, a fact that I would not be surprised if that's something that stings, might even be seen as a bit of a personal insult or possibly a de facto rejection of a commissioner who has to genuinely worry if he's going to last beyond the remainder of his current term in office. But maybe that's why this is happening right now. You don't like the way the primary election went. You don't like that we refuse to go away. You don't like that in spite of how much you try and tear down our county auditor, she continues to do her job and we continue to support her. Maybe, though, you should consider taking a hint. You are supposed to be here as our elected representatives, so if you want us to actually stop bothering you, maybe you should actually act like it.
I'm not, we cannot have outbursts like that. Thank you. Be respectful.
Good morning. I am Amanda Halsey. I'm the elected register of deeds for Minnehaha County. I'm also here today speaking as a concerned citizen, a longtime responsible voter and a taxpayer in Minnehaha County. Sorry. Excuse me. I will, of course, include information that is available to me as an elected official in the county. It has been my great privilege to serve as the register of deeds the past year and a half. Some of you may know, I was active all through high school in the South Dakota teenage Republicans. And while I know it doesn't look like I've come far from that age, I have, I am honored to be one of the youngest county officials in our state. I wanted to make that point to reflect that this position is more than a job for me. Playing a role in county government, I'm able to reflect on the years of community involvement. I've enjoyed so much. I would like to believe that my fellow elected colleagues feel similar in their roles. It seems there are many in this building that do not understand why the roles of register of deeds, auditor and treasurer are elected rather than appointed. I believe that as elected officials, leading some of the closest departments to the citizens of this county, we should be deeply rooted in our communities. Every day, we are given the authority in our jobs solely by the constituents we were elected by. It is unnerving to imagine a governmental body as large as ours being served under the mindset that their authority comes from anyone but the people they were elected by and they represent. I understand fully that this charter is to be proposed in the general ballot this November. You may want to call this part of a democratic process. I personally want to steer people clear from this notion. The three office holders of these departments are intended to be dismissed following a positive vote of this charter. These three officials were elected by the voters for Minnehaha County. If the public is unhappy with the job being done, there are proper avenues for removal set by law already. This motion comes at a time of serious political discourse. The argument is being made that this home rule charter proposal has been coming down the pike for months, if not years, but now is the best time to present it. Unfortunately, those private individuals who are bringing this forward haven't taken the time to provide more information to the public than what we are given in this room today. Conversations have been had behind closed doors and now the part-time elected body of five at-large commissioners have the power to bring this to a public vote in November. When the ads start coming out to support this charter, please, as a public, take note of where those campaign dollars are coming from. Respectfully, you as a commission body do not respond positively to partial information.
Amanda, I need for you to conclude, please.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Yokers. I live in Sioux Falls. I'm not clear on one phrase used to describe one of the intentions of the House, I mean of the home rule charter, namely, it was stated it would facilitate the intent, it would facilitate local control. As I think of it, I think it's eliminating three elected positions takes local control out of the hands of the voters. And there are 10 elected positions in the county and this move would eliminate three of those elected positions. It was stated that eliminating three elected positions would be for the purpose of making the county government more effective and efficient. I am sure this action would do this, but it would be at the cost of checks and balances that are designed to keep government more accountable and potentially more transparent to the people. I am reminded of President Trudeau's statement that he admired the CCP government because they could act so quickly and effectively like in emergencies. However, such effective government is opposite of our government, which is designed for measured thought and debate and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. My name is Rick Wible from Brookings County and the reason I'm here is I believe this is a bad precedence to set, you as being kind of the gold standard of the state, being the largest county and kind of home to one of the best cities in our state. Couple of things as I look at your document online here is I'm recommending that you don't go forward because you contradict yourself in point two with point three directly, where you talk about a more efficient executive leadership, but you don't define what the goals are of that. And then proper separation, but you don't define how it's improper now. And then by combining it in statement three, you have basically created one unit, which is kind of an antithesis of most business environments where you have an accounts payable, accounts billable, you have segregation of duties and with the county auditor position that is beholden to the public, we've seen the public's oversight already, just in your political history here in the county. When you had Ben Kite, who you had appointed, the public disagreed with that and wanted an actual auditor and they elected one through the primary in 2022, where she surpassed him by 7,500 votes. Then in the 2022 general election, they liked Leah Anderson more than each of you and she actually garnered more votes than you did. Then, in the 2020 general election, your own county treasurer got more votes than each of the commissioners did. I think you're on the wrong side of the political analysis of this. When these three people are getting more votes than you, it appears that your voters want that segregation and that public oversight within the county. That's what I'm seeing based upon the public information regarding the elections here in South Dakota. Now, I'm an election integrity expert and I'm just giving you this advice, straight up. This isn't conspiracy. This is actual fact that you can find from the Secretary of State's website. Unfortunately, your holdover did a disservice to the county auditor's office where, remember, we look back at the 2020 election, it was the test deck results and it was the public that found out and let you guys have that up there all the way through so that you could see that evidence of lack of due diligence by your previous auditor. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to ask again. I don't want applause after every speaker. It's disrespectful. I'm not going to accept booing. I'm not going to accept applause. So if you're going to applause, I'm going to ask you to leave. Okay? So give everybody their time and be respectful of them. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cara Geist. I am a resident of Minnehaha County as, I'm a former Twin Cityan, born and raised. I would still live in the Twin Cities if not the events of 2020 had not transpired. Friends who were at ground zero, George Floyd, who all lost their businesses. I watched as Minneapolis burned for four days. The governor did nothing. President Trump offered twice to help quell the rioting, twice, and he was declined by our, we watched as our governor, the chief of police and the mayor pointed fingers at each other whether it was destruction and looting. We were some of, and then we watched as a city council voted to defund the police. I lived in the northern suburbs, but we knew that they were planning to come to the suburbs and cause the same sort of rioting and looting. Our cul-de-sac banded together, peaceful people. I'd never shot a gun in my life. I borrowed a firearm and bullets and asked to please be shown how to use them. We heard the Hueys fly overhead with the National Guard called in late to quell the rioting. You know what? I blame myself. The citizens, we have ourselves to blame. Because for 30 years, I saw a policy where the government took more and more of our say, but we're hardworking people, we're tired. We thought our governments had our best interests at heart and we just want to relax. I saw the fruit of this in 2020. My husband and I were months of firsts of what I'm calling the Great Minnesota Diaspora. People who left. Do you have any idea how much we were paying in taxes in Minnesota to have this travesty happen? Any idea? I have lost all trust and respect for elected officials and I'm really sorry that I have to say that to you. I want to be able to trust you, but I can't. I've learned my lesson. Citizen oversight is necessary. I don't mean this personally to any of you, but anything that takes away our right to vote for oversight in our government has no consent from me. I respectfully withdraw my consent from this home rule charter. Thank you.
Good morning. Joe Kirby, longtime resident, lifetime resident of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County. And I, back in the 1990s, along with Dale Froelich, former county administrator, Minnehaha County Administrator, designed the new form of city government for Sioux Falls. We used a home rule charter and came up with a better form of city government, which I think has been generally effective in some of the economic development and progress we've seen in our city. Right after we did that, we started advocating for a home rule charter for Minnehaha County because Dale, as a former county administrator, knew there were efficiencies available if we could use a home rule process for our county, where an unusual county, I think a fourth of the state's population lives in Minnehaha County, and the system that's designated by state statute is designed for all 66 counties. It doesn't necessarily one size fits all. The, it doesn't work as well for our huge population county compared to some of the smaller counties. So we, like I said, for 30 years, we've been advocating, this is long before any of the current public officials were in office, has nothing to do with any of them. We've been advocating that the county put up a home rule charter for the voters to consider. I know it was done once back in the early 2000s, was not well-publicized and did not pass, but once again, I think, and I encourage you to seriously consider it and put it to the voters to see what the voters think. So, thank you.
Good morning. Jeff Berth, Minnehaha County. I tell you, I, listening to Joe, this is not a new thing. We voted on it once before my time on the commission and it's not clear to the citizens the troubles that happened with unelected versus elected department heads. What if we had a highway superintendent that refused to plow the snow? We could do something about that, but if we elected him, we could not. I'm not sure that this is politically perfect, but I know that we should let the people decide. Let's put it up for a vote. Let's, let's battle back and forth and make it a more perfect document. You know, I'm not driving the same pickup that my uncle did back in the 40s. I'm not using the same phone that my grandma used when, back in those days. Times change and our county is not a ma and pa operation anymore. And recognizing that, we actually have too many counties in this state, someone needs to make some reform and this commission needs to have greater oversight on our elected department heads. And the citizens obviously need to have oversight also and they can vote for us, they can vote for them, whatever, but that only happens every few years. Elected department heads are only up every four years. Few will remember what happened this last month, the next time we have a primary, the next time we have a general election. Let's put this on the ballot, let the people decide. Let's not make the decision. I can see it'll be a frisky discussion and all things will be aired. Thank you, guys.
Good morning. I'm Vicky Fugelsby. I'm the Assistant Register of Deeds here in Minnehaha County. I've worked for Minnehaha County for almost 23 years and I'm continuing with some thoughts Amanda brought forth. Why does this proposal come at such a time of public and political unrest? Colorado also has a home charter rule provisions. The Executive Director of the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Share and Agency has this to say about implementing a home rule charter. Let's look at some practical issues. Is your city or town going through a tumultuous period? If so, the timing may be bad for considering home rule. Local politics that are marked by distrust, excuse me, disvision or discord may not bode well for a home rule charter. In a negative political environment, it is unlikely that the charter will reflect faith and trust in representative government. It is going to be, take a long-range, big-picture view of the community and its future. The charter will accordingly be stuck on today's hot-button issues, which will not be tomorrow's hot-button issues. The rest, at best, could be a lousy charter. That's the end of that quote. Other big questions revolve around the financial impact. Today, you will vote on posting notice for the upcoming vote on the proposed 2025 budget. Yet, the home rule charter has an implication of a multitude of unexamined costs associated with it. I want to believe in the good intentions of proposing this charter, but I would urge that if the intentions are for the betterment of Minnehaha County, you would hold off on moving this forward to the November ballot. So there are, because there are so many unanswered questions. If this is the right decision for the citizens, there will be full transparency in these discussions. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alan Wheat from Minnehaha County and being a software developer, I'm very concerned about efficiency because, you know, you can do stuff efficient with computers, but you can also have problems with computers. And if you do something and don't test it and don't check it, guess what you find out? It can break. I don't know if you've ever had your computer crash on you while you're working on it. It's like, whoa, I just lost everything. I've had that happen. Matter of fact, in developing software, I've had junior programmers come in and clean up the code and guess what? It crashed three times when I came back because of efficiency. They made it more efficient, but they didn't check it. They didn't test it. And I'm going, be careful. We're entering an era of AI and I don't know if you know about AI, but it can manufacture documents that don't even exist. Questions have been asked online. And then they say, prove it, AI, and AI manufactures the documents. How do you check it? You've got to have some kind of oversight. You've got to have that oversight into things. And also, previously, when we were trying to get election integrity on the agenda, it would never show up. Now, we have Leah, son of a gun, it's showing up and there's times when we talk about it and that's what we want to do. We want to look at things. And, and the other thing, coming from California, moved here because I thought, wow, I'm moving to a state that's just wonderful. And then I'm finding out, oh, it's not as clean and clear as I thought. And so I'm concerned because property, I don't know if you know about your deed, but right now, it's not online. Guess what? Our deeds are not computerized so people can have access and get into them. And guess what? That's a problem because they've got all these companies out there that are protecting people because people think it's more efficient, put things online so people can have access to it. So can the thieves. So I appreciate all our elected officials and I hope that you don't bring this forward. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kristy Golden. I'm from Minnehaha County and I just want to thank you for bringing this issue forward so we can have a discussion about it and understanding that Minnehaha County's economic impact on South Dakota is profound. It is our number one county in so many ways, including having 25% of our population and 25% of South Dakota's commercial property valuation is located here in Minnehaha County. We have 66 counties in the state and PIER has set up how the county should run. Of those counties, 48 of them of the 66 have less than 10,000 people. 30 of them have less than 5,000 people. I don't believe the county structures that run those counties well are the ones that are appropriate for Minnehaha County going forward. I don't believe the county structures that run those counties well are the ones that are appropriate for Minnehaha County going forward. We, I have been fortunate to have great people who've been elected. And it's time now to move forward, stand on their shoulders, and progress as we go forward. We have thirty years of home rule in Sioux Falls, and we are doing well. I think this will serve the county well. And I think, most importantly, it's great to have this discussion and then leave it to the voters to decide. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Woolidson. I was born in Minnehaha County, and you can tell by my graying hair, it wasn't yesterday. The home rule charter is not something new. The city of Sioux Falls adopted its home rule charter on September thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four. So it's coming up on its thirtieth birthday. I, too, feel it has served the city very well. But we're not the only city. There's a number of other cities in South Dakota that have adopted the home rule charter. Beersford, Brookings, Elk Point, Faith, Fort Pierre, Pierre, Springfield, and Watertown all operate under a home rule charter. The reason for that is, is that the home rule charter is a management tool. It allows cities, and hopefully Minnehaha County, to be more efficient in performing their executive, legislative, and administrative duties. Now, think about it. When the government is more efficient, it becomes a better steward of taxpayer dollars. It's time for the state's largest county to become more efficient in today's world. It's working well for the state's largest city, has for thirty years. It's working well in a number of other cities. Please help bring Minnehaha County into the future and move this resolution forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dee Brown Smith. I've lived here for now about two and a half years. Sorry. I'm so tired of hearing about efficiency. We live in a democracy, not a communist state. I don't really care if you're all, let's get it all efficient. We'll appoint all these people. We'll have all these yes people. And we can get all kinds of stuff through. That's not the point. The point is voters want to have a say in what's going on. We want to elect our officials. And if they do a lousy job, and if they want to be yes people, we can vote them out. We don't have that option if you're appointing them. We're stuck until you're gone and we can get rid of them. And that's the whole point, having the accountability so we can do something. I'm sorry. I just feel very strongly that we should be able to vote for who we want, not have somebody appoint somebody and tell us, this is what's best for you. How do you know what's best for me? You don't. And that's the point. We all should be able to vote and say what's best in our opinion, not necessarily your opinion. You're only five people. I realize you're elected, but you're only five people. You have your five individual viewpoints. But that doesn't represent everybody, and everybody should have a voice.
Sherwin Nicholson from Sioux Falls. I am thankful to be able to be a part of this. If you can imagine two people walking together along a road, both discussing a subject that was important to both of them, when one of them abruptly changes the subject and goes a different way. Oh, thank you. When the mic was abruptly adjusted, you'd see, okay, changed the subject, and this second person went a different way with the conversation, purposely diverting the conversation. I think this is close to what is happening with the home rule idea being brought up at this meeting. The idea here with home rule is to go to an early, I'm sorry, is to go to an entirely new county system. This seems abrupt and a complete change of direction. This is a diversion from the main subject that has been discussed, which is, are there irregularities or problems with the voting in Minnehaha? If so, where are they and how can they be corrected so voting will reflect true results? I have talked to many of my neighbors about this. I'm currently involved in getting a neighborhood watch together. And besides crime, we do talk about a few other things. And amongst my neighbors, there's still doubt and mistrust in the voting system. Many have lost confidence that true or correct results are really there now. The problem is still apparent. Many other states in the 2020 election had various elements of fraud, which are very concerning. And I'm sure this is, this is a part of the discussion I was having with my neighbors, too. But it's part of the overall problem. But referring to the previous person that was from Minneapolis, northern Minneapolis, I, too, saw, because I lived in Minneapolis, we were experiencing voter fraud in a way of ballot harvesting. And if you don't know what that is, that is, that's something that's really hard to get rid of. So part of the county's auditor's job is to investigate and examine the voting. Leah and her team did do an audit on the recent primary. They also should have, should have the opportunity to perform an audit on years 2020 and 2022. Minnehaha County has the largest number of voters in the state, which already has been said many times. Therefore, it leaves by default the whole state in voting. So Minnehaha must get it right. In conclusion, changing the subject from voting problems to the new department, including treasurer, register of deeds, and auditor, all being non-elected, in order to answer these problems seems nothing but a diversion from the main issue at hand. We already have an auditor with a skill set that can do a thorough job of assessing and evaluating the current system. Let's encourage her, in average, to complete the job she started. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Minnehaha County Commission. My name is Tom Dempster. I had the great pleasure of sitting where you are sitting for nine years. I also had the great pleasure of serving, I also had the great pleasure of serving as a state senator for eight years. Senator Bog, good to see you again. Everything, everything, every voice, every person who has spoken this morning has said one thing. And that one thing that everybody has said, and everybody mostly agrees on, is a fundamental belief. And that fundamental belief is, let all people vote. I thank you for the courage that you have in fulfilling your responsibilities as elected officials. And that means standing in the heat of controversy, standing even in the heat of battle in order to solve public problems. I thank you for your capacity to do that. Everything I've heard this morning says, let all people vote. I encourage you to bring this idea of a home rule charter for Minnehaha County to a vote. Thank you for your time.
My name is Megan Chutter, and I live in Minnehaha County. I also work in Minnehaha County. And I've lived here for, off and on, for twenty-six years. There's many people like myself, my age, my friends, who couldn't be here today, who would have liked to be here today because they work. I thankfully was able to be here. You know, they have, they have the same opinion as me. They have the same ideals as me. And I believe that the people should be the ones who make this decision, not a group of people that we voted in. I know we voted you in, but you're here to represent us. And by the looks of this room, I know you can't see in the other room, but based on the majority of the room that have been clapping, I would say that they are all here for the same reasons. The overflow room is completely full, and the majority of the room is clapping for the people who are here for the same reason I am. These offices have always been separate for a reason. I honestly can't help but speculate what has magically changed in 2024, that all of the sudden this commission would suggest this move and appear to abuse your authority, which was given to you by we, the people. Eliminating these offices would be a dangerous overreach of your position. And I'm asking you to put it to the people to vote. Let us decide. And based on the appearance here today, I would say we have spoken. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Larson from Valley Springs. And I just want to start by saying, really enjoying this process. I've never spoken in one of these things. But watching these people speak and tell their stories, it's just a beautiful thing. It's what America's about. I really appreciate that lady from Minnesota. It's kind of a heart-wrenching story. I think you guys are moved by that. So I'm here today because, well, Dean, you came to my office about a week ago. And we had a good discussion. And then at the end, you mentioned this home rule charter. And so a few days later, I asked you about it, and you didn't respond. I wanted some, some details about it. So, so I'm here. So over thirty years ago, my wife and I moved to this county to start a business, Comfort King, and to start a family. Those two endeavors, pretty much, is all I was focused on. And didn't really pay attention to local government or local politics because I just assumed that the so-called experts are doing their jobs and looking out for the taxpayers. Well, the events over the past four years have changed all that. I don't trust my government at any level. And I'm not alone. Look around. Recently, a man claiming to be running for this commission called my business and said he would never buy from us because I allowed two other candidates to put signs in my yard. I guess he was hoping I'd stop paying attention and stop supporting my like-minded friends. I guess he thought I would just shut up like a good little citizen. This home rule charter idea takes away the citizens' right to have a say in the functioning of their community. It's a blow to democracy. It solves no problem, and it creates more unaccountable bureaucracy. And it consolidates power into the cabal of three people. At a time when trust in our government is at all-time low, this effort only makes it worse. You could have maybe passed it five years ago when we weren't paying attention, but you won't now. Society is held together by trust. Every year, I write very large checks to this county for property taxes, both in my business and my home. I do this voluntarily. Nobody's there forcing me to do it. But what if I decided not to? And what if, in my defiance, people were inspired by that, and they decided not to? And what if fifty thousand of us in this county decided not to pay our property taxes? Well, that'd be chaos, wouldn't it? Some of you need reminding that you serve at the pleasure of us taxpayers. We pay for this. In closing, the two sponsors of this have made sure to announce it has nothing to do with their desire to remove Leah Anderson from her position as auditor. Well, we don't believe you. Leah was elected with a mandate to ensure our elections are secure and accurate.
I need you to conclude. Your three minutes are up, please. Thank you.
I'm Scott Montgomery. I have my time.
We don't do that, sir.
Well, I'll just finish by saying that there could be a class-action lawsuit if this goes through because you'd be forwarding the will of the people. We voted for her to serve out to 2027.
Thank you, Chris.
Good morning. I'm Deb Peters. I'm a lifelong resident of Minnehaha County. I was born here. I've raised my children here. I have my business here, and it's a pleasure to come and talk to you today. I am a student of government operations from a county, a city, a county, and a state levels. I am an accountant that has had a career in finding efficiencies while auditing governments and finding efficiencies and helping governments actually operate in accordance with the will of the people. The home rule charter is not a new concept. There are other counties in the state of South Dakota that have done this, and it has not blown up the universe. You've already heard that Sioux Falls has done this, along with some of the surrounding communities. And Sioux Falls didn't blow up either. It is actually operating very efficient. They have fun, new things happening in the city of Sioux Falls government and operations. These governments are operating efficiently and effectively. The people have the opportunity to discuss with the departments, have the ability to have separation of powers at the county government and at the city government. We're talking about separation of powers, allowing the county commission, who's elected, to be the legislative branch. There's already a judicial branch. And then allowing the city manager to operate the government and put the most qualified people in those positions. That doesn't have to say that the current elected officials aren't the most qualified. They could still have their jobs. This is not ousting them, but you can place them there. Let's let the people vote. Home rule concepts are not new. They've actually come from the eighteen nineties in the state of South Dakota. South Dakota voted for home rule charters to be included in our South Dakota constitution in nineteen sixty-two. It passed. The people voted. This isn't a new concept. Stemming from the eighteen nineties, it took South Dakota until nineteen sixty-two because we don't like new concepts. It takes us a while. We learn it, we process it, we vote for it, and we passed it. It has been slowly gaining traction in governments across the state of South Dakota, starting with Sioux Falls and moving through the state. This is an effective, efficient way to have separation of powers, to allow the people to speak and allow the people to participate. So with that, I'd encourage your support for the home rule charter.
Chairman Kowski, commissioners. People have mentioned about having business in this county. I've been in business in this county for fifty-two years, and if you're up to buying it, it's for sale.
Bob, would you state your name?
Oh, Robert Colby. I had the privilege and honor of serving on the county commission for twenty years before I retired, which means I did not run for another term. We've always been treated badly by the state, the county is. And this is the largest elected body that is not a state organization. This is the only body that makes its own budget with all elected officials. The city of Sioux Falls does not do that. The state does not do that. Everybody who's in either the city or the state, they give the budget to a group of people who build it for them. Now, if you hire somebody for a job, such as you're talking about here, for the management, that's an at-will position, and they serve at the will of the county, just like the appointed department heads in the state. They please the elected official or they do not. Government negatives are, it moves slow. Government positives are, or is, it moves slow. I would encourage you to look at this and give this due justice. I voted against this in 2002 because I didn't think we were ready for it at that time. I think we have to be efficient. The county commissioners are frugal. That's why you're part-time and have not voted to become full-time commissioners. That's why you do not receive health benefits that many counties grant to their county commissioners. County government is the most frugal government in the state, yet they come in underneath the auspices of the state, and they are looked upon as being spendthrifts who are wanting to spend money for anything and everything. County government is frugal. County government is always looking for a better way to do the job. And I think this is one of the things that might add to that. The city changed and went to a full-time mayor. And the commissioner, the city council members are have the central figure, who's the permanent figure for managing or running the county as a county chairperson. That moves around at the will of the county commission. The county commission is the most effective and efficient form of government in the state of South Dakota, and I applaud you for looking at this and trying your best to make this more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Meyer. First off, I want to commend the Register of Deeds, Amanda, for standing up here and telling us how she felt. You could tell that was very difficult for her. And since it's her job that's on the chopping block, I want to say I think it was in poor taste to cut her off after three minutes. Second, I want to say that it's been mentioned that all the people that are here don't represent the 200,000 people of the county. Well, I think when you design this room, you don't represent the 200,000 people of this county. Half of the people are sitting in the other room. You don't even have to look them in the eye. And I'd like to agree with a previous speaker that your three proposals here, you say a more efficient executive leadership, proper separation of powers, and to provide a professional and efficient fiscal leadership. That's implying that our current leadership is none of those. And I've also heard that this has nothing to do about Leah. One of the proponents of this has called Leah Pontius Pilate. He's called anybody who supported election integrity sore losers, which Leah is trying to prove. He said he felt confident that the voting public would be smart enough to throw her out of office at the next election. There's no secret he would like nothing better. He's called her an embarrassment to the county. He's called her irresponsible. And he floated the idea of withholding his salary increase. To say this has nothing to do with Leah is hogwash. It's all about Leah. You're just throwing in two others, throwing them under the bus to make it look better. After all, you've been, you've mentioned, this has been in the works for 23 years. Why didn't you float the idea when our last auditor was appointed? That would have been the perfect opportunity. In Section 2.01, Point General Powers and Duties, Item Number Three, it says, "Commission members in the office, when this charter goes into effect, will remain in office until the end of their term." In Section 4.05 dot Finance Office, it says, "The terms of office for the county auditor, the register of deeds, and the treasurer shall expire on the first January following the adoption of this charter." I think you need to add one more item there to say, you need to add the term of office of any commissioner that votes in favor of this charter, term will also expire. Put your money where your mouth is.
Good morning. My name is Gwen Raker. I live in Moody County, but I was a resident of Manyaha County for 40 years, so it certainly has a warm spot in my heart. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. It looks like there's two issues at hand here today. First is the Home Rule Charter itself, and the second is the elimination of public voting for three pivotal positions. Andrew Sawich wrote an opinion about the pros and cons of Home Rule charters on February 14, 2020. He was the Erie, Colorado trustee and went on to win the election as city planner-commissioner. I'm going to read one of his quotes. Now, just remember, he's writing from the perspective of municipality and not a county, but the translation is certainly appropriate. "Home rule is intended for municipalities which have outgrown their current municipal ordinances and town codes. It is meant to be a tool that is used to add to their already enumerated powers of local governance, only after the town has fully extended and exacerbated their current abilities within their town's ordinances and provisions. It is not meant to be used, it is not meant to be used as a tool for a governing body to extend their authority over others within their jurisdiction on specific matters that are important only to those leaders." When Andrew wrote this, the town had issues that separated the commission from the public. The commissioners disagreed with those within their jurisdiction. The issue was over water. They had not fully extended and exacerbated their current abilities, and neither has Manyaha County. To my eye, even though I'm a Moody County resident, looking inside a county that is dear to my heart, your actions in proposing to take away the election rights of these three pivotal positions at this time feels like a hostile action toward your auditor, whom is providing you with the highest level of professionalism and legal protection, higher than most auditors in our recent history. After all, she is an auditor, which is a new concept to this county. I don't believe you have listened to her. I don't believe you have tried to learn from her. It appears that you have only been antagonistic toward her. This feels, again, like another hostile move, when you, what you really should be doing is rejoicing in her ability to protect you. Thank you.
Good morning. Jesse Schmidt. I want to first thank you. I have sat in your place on the role for the city, and a joint city-county responsibility for 10 years. Full meetings are always an opportunity to embrace the people that stand before you, but we also have to recognize that the majority of the time, we have a vocal minority that shows up to these meetings, and we have a silent majority that views it from a social media perspective, what we gather on the local news, and various other forms of communication. Home rule has proven itself in South Dakota, and it's time that we allow it to prove itself in Manyaha County. The opportunity to take it to the voters is one that will allow us to decide, these 200,000 people, and give the greatest option to those of you that sit here without second-guessing how it happened. I appreciate that. All the reasons behind a home rule, providing for more efficiencies, even though we may not want to talk about it, that's the reality. Counties are strapped for money, and creating efficiencies has to happen in order for the county to continue to be served in the most efficient way. It allows for greater economic development, culture and social preservation, and tailored policies that fit our region and our corner of the state. So I recognize the difficult position that you're in. I thank you for running and serving in your capacity, and I wish you all the best as this comes to a vote.
Before you start, I see we have four people in line. If everybody takes three minutes, we're going to be well past the 10 after. So I'm going to let Cindy Heiburger be the last speaker.
I'll kind of hustle through mine. Kathy Sullivan, born, raised here, left when I was 17, and came home in 2020 to take care of my mother. And I just, you know, all around the country, everybody thinks this is such a great state. And I come home, and I find out, I'm kind of shocked at what I find out. And I listened to a 2023 meeting you guys all had, and a lot of you were there, and I was pretty flabbergasted at what I heard, you know, and the things that were said about a 7.7 increase in pay and mentioning Leah by name and things that were said. I just couldn't believe that was even said by a council like this. I just don't understand that kind of, I mean, I thought this was, South Dakota was a totally different kind of state, and the more I hear and see what's going on, I'm kind of, I'm kind of shocked. Home rule, I could see why that came in in the 90s. In the 90s, you guys, it amazes me when you take civics out of schools and you don't teach kids how a government works. They don't know how government works. They turn into adults. They still don't understand how government works. And I could see how a rule like that would pass, you know, and I just, I'll make mine real short and brief. There was a ruling by the Supreme Court that just came out. I thought that was just fabulous, what came out just in the last two, three weeks, Chevron. You know what it's for? It's for government offices that overstep. Maybe the laws weren't set down as straight as they should have been, and people interpolate them differently. And the Supreme Court said, you know what? It shouldn't be taken out of the people's hands, how things happen. It should, if you want to, if you've got a problem, and Chevron rules, they figured in 84, it worked well then, but it just went, it just went too far that way. Home rules, it's last I heard, and even our Pledge of Allegiance said, we're, we are a government for the people and by the people, and voting is part of that. It just kind of amazes me, when I ask young kids, I've got a niece here, 17, she knows more than most kids, but you know why? She homeschooled herself. She goes in pages. She goes to constant, she goes and figures out how governments work and goes to classes around the country, because she wants to be involved. But when I look at what we're doing in this, our government, if you ask these kids, our government, you'll ask what form of government are we? Invariably, they always say, we're a democracy. We are expressly forbidden for being a democracy. We are a representative government, and that's what I like about South Dakota and why these people are fighting so hard. I want my vote to count. I worked the elections. It was poor. 7.7 turned out in June, barely a few more after that. I think we ought to be working on educating people about how the government works and getting them involved in government. They're scared because they don't know how it works.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, county commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rick Hiley. I'm in favor of the Home Rule form of government for the county, and I have this based on experience. As a former city counselor, I operated under a Home Rule form of government and strongly feel the community greatly benefited. Home rule offers more flexibility and increased efficiency. It is more flexible, because you, in this case, the county, can implement ordinances that meet the unique needs of the county. However, you cannot pass anything that state law disallows. For instance, no new taxes may be implemented. Under the county's current form of government, you can only administer what is addressed in state law. The challenge is, state law does not always address issues that are unique to the 66 different counties across the state of South Dakota. Unfortunately, a one-size-fits-all process of lawmaking does not exist. The ability to implement ordinances that are not covered by existing state law is a distinct advantage offered by Home Rule. The establishment of a county administrator will create greater efficiency in government. With a county administrator, one person is clearly in charge versus a division of labor among five part-time commissioners that meet publicly just three times a month. Additionally, the commissioners generally have full-time jobs that monopolize their time during normal county work hours, making it difficult for them to immediately be available when needed. Having a county administrator allows for faster response times. This is especially true for things such as personnel issues, time-sensitive issues, addressing citizen concerns, or responding to emergencies such as flooding, tornadoes, snow, or ice events. Once again, having a county administrator makes it clear who is in charge when decisions need to be made. I appreciate the opportunity to have the discussion on this topic. I'm aware this has been discussed over the years. It's not a new topic. In fact, the idea was bounced around several years ago while I was still served on the city council. Considering the challenges that come along with our mixture of rural and urban populations, I think now is the time to take advantage of the flexibility and efficiency that Home Rule offers. Once again, I encourage the commission to further discuss this item, and ultimately, allow the public to vote on a county Home Rule form of government, and let the decisions decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, county commissioner, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for bringing this forward. It seems like you found a topic that everybody has a...
Please introduce yourself.
Sorry. Ben Kite, Manyaha County, former appointed county auditor. But again, thank you for bringing this item forward. You found a item that everybody's very passionate about. From my perspective, having served in the office for a few years, I can see that all these positions that you're talking about, incorporating under the Home Rule Charter, is, these are really administrative positions. Nobody sets policy. We have examples of other counties within the state that have converted to this, and they're running very well. And I, just, again, from my experience, I can see that the citizens of Manyaha County would be better served through a Home Rule Charter, by allowing commissions to appoint a department directors who would be responsible to the commission, and the commission has the opportunity to either remove them if they aren't performing. And I just think that the citizens of Manyaha County are, would be better served. I understand from a citizen's perspective, change is hard, and this is a change that would be very difficult for people to get their arms around. But I think as we study it a little bit more, we'll see that it would serve the citizens of Manyaha County much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Randy Ametson. I'm a citizen in Sioux Falls. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to be very, very brief. I would be for voting on Home Charter rule, not necessarily at this time. I would vote for it under these, under one, one, there'd be one caveat. We're comparing right now cities who use the Home Charter rule. In most of those cities, in our city, the one I'm in, the administrator of this program is elected, not appointed. Pretty important, okay? That's something for you to consider. The thing that concerns me about doing it at this point in time, I keep myself relatively up on what's going on. Not so much in the county until recently, but in the state and in the federal government. I knew nothing about this until two days ago. I believe you have an obligation to the people who elected you. If you put it on the ballot coming up on this general election, you need to make yourselves available in a less formal public forum to answer the concerns of citizens like me, so that we can vote on it in an informed manner, rather than based upon who spent the most money to buy the most billboards, to put on the most radio commercials, and sponsor the most weather reports on Kelo and Dakota Weather. So I'm not against voting on it. I think people should vote on it if the change is made. I think they have the right, and you have the duty, to do everything you can do to make sure they are informed as to what the ramifications are. Not sell them on it. Just tell them this is what will happen. But the other caveat is very important to me, and I think to a lot of people. If you're going to do this, you would be better served doing it with the administrator position being an elected position, just as yours are. Or the other option is change it so that the, so that the commission is full-time, so that the chairman of the commission is the county administrator for the time that they are chairman, and allow them to have the salary that they deserve for this grueling job. I wouldn't want to do what you, what you do, believe me. You don't get paid nearly enough. But that's all I got to say. Just do it the right way when you do it.
Good morning. Cindy Heiburger, former county commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I will try to be brief. In 2022 was when that first 20, no, 2002, excuse me, was the first task force, and I was a member of that task force. And so we did an over-year study of county government and the ins and outs of it, and the efficiencies of Home Rule at that time. At that time, I was one of three people who was opposed to county, county Home Rule. It did go to a vote, and it failed just by a small margin. I don't remember what that was. I have now spent 12 years on the county commission, and I retired. I wasn't elected off or lost my election. The benefits, I think, are that, you know, county administration... I have now spent twelve years on the county commission, and I retired. I wasn't elected off or lost my election. The benefits, I think, are that, you know, a county administrator would be a huge benefit to the county. There was times when contracts needed to be signed, and we didn't have a meeting coming up, and those contracts just sit there. There were other things that happened that we weren't here for, or we didn't have enough people, enough commissioners to vote on a specific issue, and we'd have to work around our vacation times or our family times in order to get together just to make things work. I think with a county administrator, some of those tasks could be taken care of. One thing I don't agree with is Section four point oh five, that terminates those elected officials' times in the middle of their term. You would have, if it takes place in January of twenty twenty-five, you will have a newly-elected official that no longer is newly-elected official. I think there needs to be a way to figure that out, because these people were chosen by citizens, just the same as you and I were, and I would be devastated if I worked my butt off to become a county commissioner, and then somebody said, oh, as of January first, you're no longer a county commissioner. So I don't think that's fair, and I think there's got to be a way to figure out what's right. And people do want to vote for the elected officials. There are very good things about a task, about a home rule. I'm not sure this is the right fit, all the way around. And I have, I have read it, and I've read the old one, but I think there's still a little more work to do. One more thing I want to say, and then I will sit down, and, because I said I'd be short, is that when we did it in two thousand two, the public knew about it, and they were involved in our meetings, and they were all, and so I don't know where that was, but I missed that. So thank you for your time.
All right. I'm going to close public comment at this time. Again, this is a briefing. We will be bringing it back, or most likely bringing it back. Nothing's ever certain. So we will have, commissioners are always available for comment. We, all our phone numbers are published, our emails are published, we are always available. I will turn it back to the commission if any commissioner would like to comment on the briefing today. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I would just say that I also was not aware of this before, actually, I was on vacation last week. So the first time I saw this document was on Sunday. And so I also share the concerns about the process. I, I think that the idea of home rule, and I agree, has been around a long time. It has been informally discussed. I've certainly been around where people have brought the idea up for, I've been on the commission ten years. I think probably shortly after I got elected was the first time somebody mentioned it to me. But I do think that this is an important issue, judging by the number of people that showed up today. And I listened very carefully to everybody today, and I appreciate people coming. It's not easy to come and speak publicly, and so I very much appreciate everybody taking the time to come here. I think that there are pros and cons to home rule. There are, and, and it's an issue that I think should be studied, but I would be in favor of using a process more similar to what was used in twenty oh-two, I think, and have a task force, spend some time really studying it, make that a visible opportunity for people to be involved and, and give their input, and then have that task force come forward before this is brought to a vote. Because this is a really important change, has a lot of implications, and I think that we all need to spend the time being really comfortable with this charter document to make sure that if it is brought to a public vote, that the document is the very best, addresses the concerns to the best that it can be in that document. And I personally haven't had time to do that yet, so.
Commissioner Blumberg?
I, I would agree with Commissioner Bender's sentiments. I don't doubt that there's efficiencies that could be had with home rule, and I would like to learn more about that. But I don't, I don't know enough at this point to feel like I can articulate it to the public to answer questions about how it would be better. I'd love to see more concrete examples of ways that it could have benefited us in the recent past or on issues going forward. And I just think, to be successful in the ballot box, I would like to, I would like to get to the point where we could let the public vote on it. But to be successful, I think we really would need to, to see some perspectives from both sides put into this document. I had a chance to talk with our treasurer, who's not able to be here today, and she was very concerned also, and I know she's up for reelection, and I'm very thankful that she would consider staying for four more years. I think that's a service to our citizens to keep her where she's at. So my question would be, just how can we move forward creating a charter that we would feel more comfortable putting before the, the citizens to vote on? If there's ways that we could get buy-in and in, represent the interests of the majority of the voters, I think that's the best way to be successful in the election process, but also just successful for our community. So that's where I'm at. I would like to be supportive if we could, could figure those things out. So at this point, I, I just need to learn more about it.
Well, I don't disagree with anything that was said with the commission group. I think it's obvious that there's people that need more information on both sides of the process. Home rule was passed in nineteen ninety-four in the city form of government. I spent eight years under the home rule responsibilities. I think it is more efficient, it holds people more accountable, it also gives people some authority and responsibility that are matched in leadership responsibilities. It's not a process that forces everything that we do by the state, which is a significant part of our budget. We can't have the growth that we see in this community with public safety, the needs for supportive services and those kinds of things, with some of the rules that were established a long time ago. And frankly, education in this whole process is probably going to be the biggest part of trying to get this moved forward, because there's misperceptions about what this is intended to be, and regardless of what people's personal thoughts are, I think it's going to be our responsibility to make sure that people do get all the facts and what needs to happen.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, so I appreciate all the public input. That was the intent, intent today was to get some measure of, of feedback on the general direction of this draft charter. I think as one of the primary authors of the charter as it stands now, I'm, I'm open to changes, and I'm open to a process that would extend the timeline. So I, I tend to think this needs to go to a November electorate to get broad buy-in from a, a cross-section of the county to change form of, of government. So whether that's twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six, I think we can have that dialogue. I think we can have, have some dialogue around the, the financial offices and the registered deeds auditor and treasurer positions. I did not hear a lot of objections to just the concept of home rule as local control. I did not hear a lot of objections to a county manager, a separation of powers. I will state, and I think I can state, that my colleagues have a certain humility about this part-time job. It is a difficult job. It is difficult to, that the five of us manage the IT director, the planning and zoning director, the director of equalization, we're their boss, but no, no one of us can do anything about it. We need three of us to do something about it. It's a very awkward form of government to manage the bureaucracy. A separation of powers between the legislative branch and the executive branch would be a step in that right direction, and I think modern forms of local government are embracing a, a, an energetic executive would be kind of the, the phrase. So, but I, I also think we have to be willing to have some hard conversations. So I appreciate my colleagues and the willingness to get this up for discussion. We have to be willing to face the voters, and at some point, there needs to be basically a, a plebiscite, a, a vote in a November environment where we find out, is this a vocal minority? Because we, we hear, especially on the elections-related issues, we hear from the same group of people over and over again, and it's their right to come here, but we, we represent two hundred thousand people, and we have to have a system of government that, that manages that correctly. And so whether that is in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six, I have faith in the people, that this will work itself out, and we will get the best people into the positions. But basically, I guess, I would just say, the intent of this is to put forth efficient professional leadership in the roles of trust in our positions of authority in our county. And if you think, when I'm saying we need professional, responsible leadership, that I'm against your favored person, you might be telling on yourself a little bit. So I would just emphasize that as we go forward, whether it's twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six, we're going to have a, a November electorate that needs to sort some of this out. And that's just where I'm coming from on this, but happy to make changes and study the document, because I think the time has come for some form of home rule. Thank you.
All right. I personally have no agenda on this. This year seemed like it would be a great year, but if we need to educate people more so they can make an informed decision, I'm for that also. This is the most full-time, part-time job I have ever had, and I've, very seldom in my life had less than two jobs. It is a very rewarding job. I did not get back to one constituent, as was addressed earlier. I was out of state all week last week. I got home Sunday morning at one in the morning. I did my best to reply to phone calls and emails and texts. It, it happens where you don't catch everybody, and I apologize for missing one. But I am still available for any conversation if somebody wants to give me a call. So, that being said, this briefing is concluded, and the commission has a decision to make if and when they want to bring it back. So, moving on. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the amended joint powers agreement establishing the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. Logan Penfield, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Logan Penfield, City of Sioux Falls. Can you guys all hear me? Is this high enough? I'm here to discuss the updated joint powers agreement that is between the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, the joint powers agreement that created or established the Accessible Housing Advisory Board. It's a relatively minor contract amendment, but it is pretty important. First part of the amendment is simply amending the title from housing clinic coordinator to house, community housing coordinator. When the, when the JPA was established and when the Accessible Housing Advisory Board was established, there was an initial concept that the housing clinic would be a physical location. That has migrated to becoming a more online tool that is currently in development. So the, the position that is a joint position between the city and the county is actually titled community housing coordinator now. And so part of the, the amendment will be updating that title throughout the joint powers agreement. The second part of the amendment is to simply clean up language for clarification. When, when the board was established in twenty twenty, they were going from the homeless advisory board, or homeless advisory committee, I can't remember the, the technical title of it.
A J B.
To the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, which was a joint, which was a creation between Minnehaha County, the City of Sioux Falls. Lincoln County has direct representation on there as well. And throughout that document, it talked about addressing homelessness a considerable amount of times. We wanted to make sure that, we tried to remove direct references to addressing homelessness, because the goal of the housing division, a lot of the county services and Ahab.
We need to leave the door open, I'm sorry, for open meeting laws. Thank you. No, you're good.
Is to try to address the upstream challenges of housing homelessness and, and the entire spectrum of getting people and families housed. So, for example, there's homeless services throughout the community. The county has some services to try to address that, that do case management and, and more rapid rehousing for homeless families. But the, the city and the county don't necessarily directly have a homeless shelter, for example. Now, the city, from my perspective, does invest, supports Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, but that contract's now with the health department, not with the housing division and planning and development services, which this board oversees. So a lot of it is trying to clean up that language, just to make it clear the type of work that we do within the advisory board. The advisory board went over the, the, the updates to the, the JPA and the amendment that we have before you. They approved it late last fall. Been working with the county staff, with Carrie Benz, our attorney and, and the county's attorney's team, to make sure that everybody's on the same page to the process. For this would be, if it's approved here, the county commission will then take it to the city to have it finalized. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any public input on this joint powers agreement memo? All right.
I gotta, I just have a question about this. Is combining, is this combining city and county activity, you know, and, and, and authority? I'm just, I, it just didn't come through clear. My name's Alan Wheat, and it didn't come through clear as to, so the eleven-member board is going to be advisory, is that?
Currently, there's an eleven-member board that's established by the current joint powers agreement, which this, this is an amendment two. That board oversees the City of Sioux Falls Housing Division. It oversees a lot of the Minnehaha County practices. It's a purely advisory board. We work through, you know, from, from our perspective, from the city's perspective, what we bring to the board, a lot of times, is different projects that we're considering. So if we're considering doing, or supporting a large tax credit project in which we're going to do some gap financing for, we bring our annual action plan to the board for, for recommendation, for approval. That's something that the city has to submit to HUD in order to utilize our community development block grant dollars and our home dollars. A lot of the big projects that, that we do with city funding or with a, a joint funding through the state is part of either that action plan or individual contracts that we'll bring to that board for recommendation to city council in, in those scenarios. If we're using city funds, it ultimately is a contract that has to go on council. One way to make sure that we're, we're properly vetting those agreements is to bring that to the board. The board has five at-large members, which we try to make sure it's a, it's a good mix of community stakeholders that can provide different input, different perspectives into the process that we're trying to work through. So right now, we have, just from the at-large group, we have an architect that, that had worked for a developer that did low housing, or low-income housing. Jeff Nelson's the chair. He's a realtor that's been in business since longer than I've been alive. I don't exactly know how many years Jeff Nelson has been at it, but there's a lot of wisdom there. We have a, a business banker on that board. We've got a lot of different voices that we can pull from, so that we're making sure to think through the different projects that we're doing. So, yes, to, to answer your question, it is, it is a, a joint agreement between the city and the county, but it's one that already exists, and it's operating very well, in my opinion. I, I've, I'm very fortunate to have, to, to be able to lean on that board for perspective, for, for input. But when we were looking through the, the, the joint powers agreement when I started a little, a couple of years ago, it was the same time that the homeless advisory task force was going on at the city council that was read by, led by Councilor McCurris. And as we were looking through this, the, the original joint powers agreement, it talked extensively about homelessness, and going back to try and understand why that was, it was because a lot of that language was left in there when they created Ahab from the homeless advisory board. And so it was just trying to clean up the way that the, the board operates, the intent of it for, to, how it operated, and to make sure. it for, how it operated, and to make sure that we were staying kind of within the bounds of that joint powers agreement.
Commissioner, no other public comment? Move on to commission action questions. Commissioner Bender.
Well, I would just, I thank Logan for coming today. And there is history here. This was a group that was focused on homelessness, but had no real funding, really wasn't able to effectuate any action. Just kind of took in information and didn't really do anything with it. And there is a position that is jointly funded between the city and the county, and that is kind of how this whole agreement came forward, is to outline the terms of that jointly-funded position. And we did spend a fair bit of time talking about these proposed amendments. It's been through the state's attorney's office. Carrie Benz has been the one who's really carried the heavy lifting on the county side. And I'm in favor of these changes. There's a lot of debate about particular words and the function, but the benefit here is that there's a position that's shared between the county and the city so that those entities who are dealing with a similar population within the city and the county are able to share information. And we're actually given now, through the county, a seat at the table as the city makes decisions about administering federal funding for housing projects that do, and are designed, and all of our conversation goes around, how can we move the needle to make more affordable housing available in our area for folks? So I'm fully in favor of this and supportive and willing to make a motion after folks have an opportunity to discuss it.
Any other comment? I guess my only comment would be, somebody told me here a few months ago, the county's primary role is dealing with the naughty and the needy, and this is definitely on the needy side. It's important. Homelessness is not a problem that can be solved, but it is an issue that needs to be managed. And I think this does a good job of working with that issue and doing our best for the people that are in need at the time. So I am supportive also. Commissioner?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider adoption of provisional budget for the fiscal year 2025. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. Seems like we've been talking about budget for a long time.
We have.
And so today, we want to bring forward to you, to have you authorize the Auditor's Office to publish the notice of hearing to consider adoption of our provisional budget for fiscal year 2025. I won't go through all of this in detail, but we'll go through a few highlights of this. Our total requested budget is just over $131 million. Of that, $90 million is related to general funds, just under $20 million is related to highway funding, and just under $8 million is related to bond redemption fund. As part of the 2025 budget, we are not levying any new opt-out. We have just over $2.1 million available in previously authorized opt-outs from 2019 and 2023. Additionally, there were 12 new positions approved as part of the provisional budget. Nine of those were positions that were budgeted for a full year. Were three of them are budgeted to correlate to a mid-year related to the Juvenile Justice Center new building opening. As in previous years, public safety continues to be a driving factor within our general fund budget. Just over 70% of our general fund budget is related to public safety-related departments. I'll just go through a few through slides. This will look a little bit familiar. The original column here is the requested budget that you saw at the very beginning of our process. Today, on requested budget for general fund, we're at about a 2.66% cash applied. These changes identified here are those that were changed from the beginning to our time today. The only two changes from the last time we spoke are these last two lines. One is the deduction in Metro General Fund contribution that I had briefly mentioned the last time we spoke. And then additionally, we have increased our vehicle insurance about $30,000 across all funds, across the funds that have vehicles due to an increase in our vehicle insurance that we just recently paid. So that changed our estimates for next year. So as far as general fund, highway fund, emergency management, and 24/7 sobriety had a few minor changes, again, related to vehicle insurance. Otherwise, this is what you have seen on previous times. Scrolling down, the document that I'm starting here is the actual provisional budget. So it goes through a number of pages. This document, it will be published to the county papers. It will also be published on the county's website. And additionally, a copy will be available in our office as well. So this will be published to make the public aware that we'll have a hearing the first Tuesday in September, which is September 3rd, for the commission to consider the provisional budget. I do know that we will have one additional change relating to utility values. That always changes property tax revenue slightly. We don't get those final numbers until late August, so that'll be coming in September. But generally speaking, this is what we, I don't anticipate any major changes from now until September. And then this is the actual notice of hearing that will be published along with the numbers, just for your awareness. And then lastly, I did include our forecast and cash analysis that we've talked about multiple times, just in case there were any follow-up questions. So I'll pause there to see if you have any questions or anything else for me.
Public comment on the provisional budget. All right. Seeing none, move it to the commission for action and questions.
I frankly don't have any additional questions or concerns. I think we've been through this at least a dozen times or more. I appreciate your efforts in getting this accomplished. Your responsibilities to make this all happen have been, I can't even say the right word because I can't come up with somebody that deserves more acclamation, if you will, on what you've had to adjust and make work in this process. So thank you for that. I would authorize that we adopt this provisional budget for fiscal year 2025.
So that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Motion, a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Bender.
My only further discussion is that I also want to second his acclamation for Susan and the work that you and your team have done. It's truly a pleasure to work with you. It's great to work with somebody where you can trust. The information provided and the forecasting that you do for us is so helpful as we try to look to the future and make wise decisions about what we spend today. So thank you.
You're welcome. Our office is happy to help.
All right. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the immediate hiring for nine new positions included in the fiscal year 25 provisional budget. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. You might remember this pattern from the last couple of years. After the provisional budget, this process and this point in the process with the budget, we've asked for your approval to go ahead and start the recruitment for the positions that are approved for the upcoming year. This year, we'd like to do the same for the nine positions that Susan mentioned were approved for the full year. It does have a cost of about $260,000, but I would footnote that that assumes that we could get all those positions filled right away, which we won't. So I anticipate the cost will be much less than that. If you approve this, this expenditure does qualify under ARPA, and we also believe we have some additional salary savings in some of those departments to help cover the cost. If you have questions about the level of the ARPA funding, Susan's here, and she can provide some more insight on where we stand at the moment, if you wish.
All right. She is the expert nationally, as well as locally. All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission questions, actions? Commissioner Blainberg.
Since Susan is here, could we get that update on where we're at with ARPA? Please.
Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. As we've talked, we are required to have all our funds obligated by the end of this year. We are on track to do that. One of our challenges is with that obligation, as far as estimating the last half of the year, as far as things that are not necessarily contract-driven. For example, many of the things within the human services area, burials, rent assistance, utilities, those are things I can use history to guide us as far as what I expect those numbers to be, but you could have quarters that are going to be higher or lower than the previous ones. So at this point, my estimate for what is unallocated as far as from now until the end of the year is now around about $200,000. So as Carrie indicated, we have the total cost of those positions, if they were filled immediately, would be about $260,000, but she's anticipating something significantly less than that with hiring and time to interview and such. So the positions do qualify, and so those dollars of the unallocated, about $200,000, would essentially use up almost all of those remaining unallocated. My estimates could be high or low. Time will tell how good my estimates are, but we are continuing to monitor those every month as we go forward, just because we're at that time of this funding that we need to be really careful how we proceed for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Mission action?
I would make a motion to authorize the hiring of those nine new positions for the 2025 budget.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare for Transitional Housing and Cultural Services. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, Programs and Services Manager. The county's partnered with Southeast Behavioral Healthcare for Transitional Housing and Cultural Services under the COSAP grant since October 1st of 2020, and these grants are set to expire on September 30th of this year. Upon review of the transitional housing stats that we have, from the start of the grant, we've had about a 59% success rate of individuals who have either graduated from the treatment court programs or who are currently active in one of the four treatment courts that we have here in our community. The individuals being housed there are early in our program, and so they generally still struggle with maintaining sobriety. They generally don't have jobs, they're having family issues and things like that. So they're usually unhoused or in an unsafe housing situation when we place them there, so it is a difficult population to manage. But I would say Southeast Behavioral Health staff has been doing a really good job at managing that population for us. As you know, if people don't have stable housing, or if they're not being successful in especially our treatment courts, we find them having to be housed in the jail at times, which is a cost of over $100 a day. And we work really hard to help these people find employment in our community, get their children back, find their own stable housing. And so the cost to the citizens in the long run is much less if we are able to make these people successful. We've been researching options to continue the funding of this housing without much success at this point. So as such, I would request that the county continue to fund these transitional beds through December 31st of 2025. Upon completion of this contract, if you sign it, Southeast Behavioral Health is committed to seeking funding through other resources to try to sustain the level of housing that we have there. If agreed, this contract will be for 14 transitional housing units with priority given to individuals that are in our second judicial circuit problem-solving courts. I've also enclosed a letter of support for the transitional housing in each of your packets from the mental health and drug court judges that currently sit on those programs. And the total amount that we are requesting to get us through December 31st of 2025 is $102,368 to be paid in three payments as set out in the contract. I also have Chris Graham and Kim Hansen here from Southeast Behavioral Health, if you have any questions for them, or would like any input from them, or if you have any questions for me.
All right. First of all, public comment on this agenda item. All right. Turn to the commission for questions and action. Commissioner Bender.
I think we're back to the needy here. You know, you said that that was one of our core responsibilities, and I commend Michelle. She's been really beating the bushes in how to come up with some replacement funding for these beds. I think that her data shows that they have been, even though it's hard to draw a straight line always through data when you're dealing with this kind of a difficult population, having this housing has made a difference. And, you know, these are folks who have committed to these problem-solving courts. They're getting a lot of support. I appreciate Southeast Behavioral Health being willing to participate with us on this. And, you know, I'm not a big proponent of spending a lot of money if I have the option, but this, I believe, is an opportunity for us to provide some stopgap funding for a population truly in need and give us some time to have Southeast work for other more permanent funding. So I'm in favor of this.
Other comments? I guess myself personally, you know, the cost of doing something versus the cost of doing nothing, and I think in this case, the cost of doing nothing would be significantly more than the cost, this amount that we're looking at paying. And I really encourage Southeastern Behavioral Health, you know, over the course of the next year, to look for additional funding for this program, so I also am supportive. Need a motion? I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Summit Foods Services contract for JDC meal services. When do we go from calling you the JDC to the JJC?
We haven't set an official date for that. That's one of the things that we're looking at. I've been calling it JJC when I talk to you, but we're looking to set an official date. My guess would be when we actually inhabitate it, so.
Good enough.
But we're here today with our annual contract from Summit Foods. We did a bid process. They won the bid. It's about a 4.5% increase over what it was last year. I'd ask for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. Public comment?
Sorry.
I'll take, I'll accept the motion in the second. Please call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now at our opportunity for public comments, so if there's any non-agenda item that anybody would like to bring forth to the commission now is your opportunity. We just ask that you state your name and your county of residence. Good morning, Jason.
Jason Gierman, Lincoln County, however. I'm the emergency manager for Minnehaha County. Give you a brief update on the flooding. So obviously, June 21st, I believe it was, we received the torrential rains in the area. Not near as bad as what happened to the south of us, but it was substantial. So we've been working with, I've been working with the townships and the cities to get some of their damage assessed. So there's two types of damage that get assessed. The first is individual assistance, and that's the assessment that generally comes from the state. And they had a website this year set up where people could go in and assess the damage of their house themselves and enter it into this website with pictures, descriptions, estimates, things like that. However, the information is only as good as what's put in. And today, FEMA is in town, myself and Regan will be going with them to do what they call windshield surveys. It's the first time I've heard that term on a damage assessment, so I'm not sure what to expect, but I'm assuming it has to be just drive by the house instead of going in and seeing what's been destroyed or what's not been destroyed. There's different levels of just drive by the house instead of going in and seeing what's been destroyed or what's not been destroyed. or what's not been destroyed. Uh, there's different levels of destruction. Um, you know, it has to be a major or a totally destroyed. And we're not seeing a lot of totally destroyed houses, but there's some major damage, um, around the area from, you know, water in the basement. Uh, so, we'll, we'll clear that up today. And then the next form is the public assistance, and that's the roadways, uh, bridges, uh, public buildings, uh, parks, uh, that type of thing. And that's what I've been working on with the townships, is getting out and getting their surveys done and getting it in before the deadline, which was the twelfth. Now, the deadline doesn't necessarily mean that other townships that haven't contacted me can apply. They can apply, and we'll be working with them to see what they have for damage in the future. Um, next week, I believe, is when FEMA's coming to town to do some of the road, uh, damage assessments. Um, the state has a new program that's called Crisis Track, and it's something I've been pushing to the townships and the cities to get people up on it and using it. However, you know, the spring flood is usually our problem, and this, you know, so everybody kind of got lackadaisical, I guess, including myself. And this kind of came as a surprise. A lot of the townships, um, I don't think realized the damage that were, was in the area. Uh, without the software, um, I, I don't think we would have met the threshold to do it. Uh, for me going out to, um, each, each township and helping them get through this. And eventually, I'll go out and train them how to do it. Uh, but it was very efficient, and we, we've met the threshold, which is about, uh, within Minnehaw County, there's a formula they use, but it's about nine hundred and eighty thousand. We're up to about one point five million in damage right now. And that's including the city of Sioux Falls. Uh, they've got some substantial damage to parks. Um, and a lot of that hasn't been calculated yet with, uh, personnel costs because they're still fixing things. Um, if you guys have any questions for me about the process or anything else that's been going on, um, have at it.
Appreciate the update. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Moving on then to commission liaison reports. I was gone most last week. I have nothing.
I think I was just nominated to share. Gerald and I and Tom had the opportunity to attend the NACO conference in Tampa over the weekend. Um, so, that was a very good experience. I was a first-time attendee. Um, so, I'm thankful for the opportunity to go. Lots of, uh, very applicable topics and, uh, presenters. So, I have a large stack of documents that I brought home with lots of time. But I did want to just take a moment to highlight that, um, one of the NACO reports from the commission on mental health and well-being, um, highlights Minnehaw County, um, for our programs for the Alliance re-entry program, um, for the Safe Home Project and the LINK. Um, so, um, quite an honor, I think, to be recognized for the work that we've been doing. Um, that's probably all I have for, uh, liaison assignment today.
Any word on who the second VP is nationally? Remember who got elected?
George.
George.
Can't think of his last name.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I believe he is from Mecklenburg County, North Carolina. Thank you.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Good to know. Thank you. That's good to be recognized. Questions, comments? Commissioner Bennega?
Uh, I...
Wasn't a boondoggle?
No. I, uh, definitely have started to dry out after getting wet and soaked and whatever for five days in a row there with high humidity. And, uh, frankly, uh, thank God we had Uber. We'd all probably needed a boat to get home. But, to make a long story short, I've got all the information as does Jen coming by electronic mail, and we'll talk about that in more detail because it's massive in the amount of information that was provided.
Been there, done that. I understand. So, okay. Any other liaison reports? Non-action commission discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll throw one idea out as a reward to the, the diehards that stayed all the way to the end of the meeting. Uh, I, I just wanted to throw out, uh, in reference to any future action on a home rule charter, I, I'd been working with the state's attorney's office on the draft, and I think we got a lot of public input today that, uh, to show good faith to that and that we are open to making changes. I would even throw out, uh, something more concrete, but before, I would direct Eric's team to make a lot of effort on working on that. Um, I would throw out, um, where we had three points, the, the home rule concept, the county manager concept, and the combination of, uh, three offices into one finance officer. I'd be willing to focus on the top two and, uh, see if, uh, obviously, all my colleagues could reach out to the state's attorney's office on what would go into that drafting. But I think if we don't have a majority to push that through, uh, in the next couple of weeks to get it on to the, meet the deadline for the November ballot, then I think we need to look at other options such as studying the issue in more, more formal manner. But if one of the sticking points for some of my colleagues is that, uh, I think I'll have some conversations with the state's attorney's office about how we would redraft it to, to get some of the, the core points a- across and up to a, a vote in November. But just open to those, uh, conversations with any of you individually or with the state's attorney. So, that's all I had to add. And I guess I will add, uh, I really appreciate mentors Cindy Heiburger and Jeff Barth being here. Your public input is meaningful to me, and I think hopefully Cindy sees that some of my comments are following exactly some of her wisdom and guidance. And, uh, I think the time for this will be ripe at some point, whether it's this year or in some future year. We're, we're on to something here. And so, don't take this as I'm being dissuaded from, uh, the concept of home rule, but I think we need to take, uh, wisdom where we see it and take a, a proper path. If an amendment would help us get there, then I'm open to an amendment. But that's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have an executive session scheduled, so, in this room. So, we'll clear the room, and in about seven minutes, we'll begin our executive session. I would look for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law one, twenty-five, two, one, three, four, and six. So, moved.
Second?
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.